We're getting people joining for items that are quite later on in the agenda. And just if we go through agenda management at the start, it might just help us all anchor ourselves in what we need to achieve today.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to acknowledge that we meet on the traditional land of T D six territory. And acknowledge the diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors footsteps have marked this territory for centuries, such as Cree. Danny, Sotu, Blackfoot, and Gorda Sioux, as well as Meti and Inuit, and now settlers from around the world. I will do a roll call of council members. Consular Wright.
Good morning.
Consular Nak.
Good morning.
Consular Prince Bay.
Good morning.
Consular Stevenson.
Good morning.
Consular Paquette.
Good morning.
Consular Tang.
Good morning.
Consular Hamilton.
Good morning.
Consular Rutherford.
Good morning.
Consular Salvador.
Good morning.
Consular Cartmel.
Good morning.
Consular Rice.
Good morning.
Consular Chance. Consular Chance might be a little late.
Oh, good morning, I'm here.
There? Okay, good. All right. Adoption of the agenda was carried, approval of minutes, protocol item, all those things were done. So Madam McLeary, before we go into our item that was the that we were on at the last meeting, can you quickly walk us through the things that we have already dealt with?
Yeah, that'd be great. So just so that we're all on the same page, so council did finish at its last meeting, item six point one. When you start back up, you're going to jump back to six point two and six point three. There's still speakers on the board from council who have questions of administration.
Yeah.
Six four was actually dealt with.
Yeah.
Six point five is actually a council orientation item that's been laid over from previous council meetings. That was selected by Mayor Sohee.
Six five, right?
Yep, six five. Six point six was selected by Consular Nak. There's actually a motion on the floor, and that has also been laid over from a previous meeting.
Yeah.
Six point seven was selected by Consular Wright. We're looking for a decision.
Yeah.
Six point eight was actually dealt with at the start of the council meeting.
Yeah.
Six point nine selected by Consular Wright, as well as six ten, both looking for decisions. Six eleven also from Consular Wright requests for decision. Six twelve from Consular Wright requests for decision as well. Six thirteen was selected by Consular Cartmel. It is still to be dealt with.
Yeah.
You did deal with a number of bylaws at the last council meeting, so seven one's been dealt with, seven two, seven three, seven four, seven five, and seven six. Seven seven is still to be dealt with, seven eight is still to be dealt with, and we would request that that item is actually dealt with today.
Okay.
As it was laid over from a previous meeting and a decision does need to be made. Seven nine has been dealt with, seven ten, and we still have seven eleven and seven twelve to deal with. There are four motions pending, eight one through eight four, and there are three private reports, nine one, nine two, and nine three. Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Thank you so for the bylaw seven point eight, one nine nine seven four. We can bring that forward once we have done with, dealt with item six point two and six point three?
Yes, please.
Okay. I also want to know from council members. The items that were at committee, number of them are selected. I know Consular Cartmel has a subsequent on six point one three. That's the reason he exempted it. So on the vehicle for hire, Consular Wright, do you have questions or you just exempted for voting purposes? So we got a good sense on the, on the timing on the agenda?
For the six point nine and six ten was for voting purposes?
Okay, so we could deal with them quickly as well. If there is no, other council members don't have any question on the, how about on six point one one designated driver options, you selected that one too?
Yes, there was a motion, I think, put forward from committee, and I would like to amend that motion.
Okay, got it. And on six point one two, you also exempted the tax notice form. Do you have questions or you just want to vote purposes?
Um, I have maybe one question and then vote on it.
Okay.
I do believe that one will take more than.
More than that because I'll be okay. But six point nine and six point ten are for voting purposes. We can think about that, bring them forward after we dealt with the bylaw. Okay, good. That's giving you a good sense.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I don't know if there were any other committee items were selected that I don't know, other than.
And so just, just because I know that we'll have a number of members of administration watching today, so just for clarity, this meeting goes from nine thirty till twelve o'clock today.
Yeah.
And then if you're not finished, this will, will be asking for a motion to continue on March twenty second.
Yeah.
That would be, I'm assuming, nine thirty to five.
Okay.
Does that work for council?
Well, we had that day set aside anyways, right? So it should be clear on people's calendar. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So can you show me the list of council members that were in the queue to ask questions on?
The last one that was on the board for items seven, sorry, six two and six three was Consular Rice. And then I do believe there were two other councils who indicated verbally that they were about to click on.
Okay.
So we'll go back to that item.
All right. So we are going back to our items six point two and six point three. Operating, financial update, and capital financial update up to December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Okay. Consular Rice, go ahead.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Chair. I do have some questions. Just, just try not to get my brain rushed. So in terms of operating updates, I just want to say I really appreciate the updates and then three times per year and give us the sense where our financial state. And is there full recommendation? Full, full recommendation, I just want to make sure my understanding is correct. And then in total is forty four million dollars under spending and for two thousand twenty one. So is that correct?
So if, if you got that forty four million dollars by adding all of the different recommendations.
Yes.
Not quite correct. What I would say is the report shows that the budget is fifty one point nine million dollars, I believe. Underspent for the year. And these motions, so automatically that's transferred to the Financial Stabilization Reserve. And then these motions are motions that deal with carry forwards. Either from the Financial Stabilization Reserve, the unallocated general reserve, or the appropriated Financial Stabilization Reserve.
I, I understand our, the surplus fifty one point nine million dollars indicated in the reports. And so I add this full recommendation carry forward is under, is on spend it and then in two thousand twenty one. So the number is different. This is one. A second. And how this forty four under spending will impact the operating budget and for two thousand twenty two. So I, I understand there is details and for each carry forward go to which reserve. But how this impact the total budget and for two thousand twenty two operating?
So what each of these motions does is move the budget that was previously in twenty twenty one into twenty twenty two with these particular funding sources. So it'll increase twenty twenty two's operating budgets.
Increased by forty four million dollar or increased by surplus fifty one nine?
No, increased by the numbers that are in each of the respective motions. So the first motion will increase the operating budget by eight point five million, the second one by nine million, the third one by seven point two million, and the final one by nineteen point four million.
Yes.
And that is, that nineteen point four is nineteen point four of the fifty one point nine million dollar surplus.
Uh, so this is a confused coming in, and then I have this confusion, and I do believe the public may confuse in the same. I add this increase for these four numbers together is forty four million dollars. And that is why I ask increase.
Yes, you are increasing the budget by forty four million dollars. By moving budgets that were previously in twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. But motions one, two, and three are not being made from the surplus. Only motion four is from the fifty one point nine million dollar surplus. Motions one, two, and three are from money held in reserves. Where we didn't spend it in twenty twenty one, but would, are moving it to twenty twenty two so it can be spent this year.
Uh, yes, I understand that. And specifically for nineteen point four million dollars and will will take, take out and from surplus. Now that is, other results are FSR and only have like twenty nine point four million dollars increase. And so that's no problem for that. I just want to get the sense, the total increase for the budgets for the two thousand twenty two and due to this recommendation.
Yes, that's correct. You are increasing the budgets by the sum of all four of those items.
Yes, for the, the first three items. Uh, my time is out. I may come back a second round. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Consular Rice. Consular Salvador.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just want to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just want to reiterate picking up from where we left off, that, that I am really impressed with it been here. Being able to, yeah, see favorable variances despite that continued volatility. Just want to, want to commend that. And of course, on the capital side, I, I think it's always worth mentioning that, yeah, the vast majority of projects are on time and, and on budget. So great work on that front. So a question around the, the new loan pricing from the province. I know it was briefly mentioned, but I'm just wondering, so is that? Is that, that's for future debt, correct? So that's not gonna, gonna impact projects or, or work that we've already approved, or is it?
So it'll impact, so I'll say it this way, it is on anything that we have not yet borrowed. So if we have had an expenditure and borrowed for that expenditure, once we've made the borrowing, those later, those rates are locked in and they won't be adjusted. It's for any borrowing from this point forward, the rates will be higher. And so it can have an impact on already approved capital projects. And we do each year with the supplementary operating budget adjustments. We reforecast what debt servicing is and make those adjustments in the spring and fall supplementary adjustments.
Okay, okay. So we'll eventually get, get a look at what the impact of this change will be.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you. And then just one, one clarification on, on our debt limit. So I believe my, my reading at some of the tables in attachment three is that by, you know, twenty twenty four, for example, we're going to be at basically seventy five percent of our limit. And that's basically right at, right at the edge. Is that correct? And then a little bit further out, in the next four year budget, we're basically right against that debt limit. And, and my, my understanding is then, you know, unable to initiate any really significant capital projects without being at an elevated debt risk. Is that correct?
So I would just highlight that the seventy five percent is, that's, we're, so we're bumping at to seventy five percent of the limit. So you still have all of that room between the, the dark blue and the, the line that you can move into. What we, we've always highlighted seventy five percent because we know that that is a threshold that when we used to borrow from the Alberta Capital Finance Authority and now we borrow from Treasury Board and Finance, we know that that's a threshold that they watch for and they put in place different procedures to review the borrowings when we hit that seventy five percent threshold. But it doesn't mean that you can't borrow. You can still borrow up to your limit.
Okay, okay. Well, I appreciate the clarification there. And just maybe to, to Mr. Mayor, have we actually moved the recommendation?
No, I, we haven't yet. I was gonna go to councillor Nack to move that, but if I don't see him on the board, he wouldn't have any issues if you move it.
Sure. Oh, I was, okay, sure. I'd be happy to, happy to move that recommendation just for, for expediency.
Good. All right.
Second.
Second by councillor, councillor Nack or councillor Rutherford, councillor Rutherford.
Mr. Mayor, would you mind just clarifying or is the recommendation in six two and six three being moved or are we dealing with them separately? They were cross referenced?
Yeah. So how would we do that? I think the request, decision is required on six point two.
Yeah, but a motion could be moved. So I just want to get clarity what's being moved.
Can, can we move together, six point two, six point?
Absolutely. We're to move together, yeah.
Good, cut. For both six point two and six point three.
Thank you very much.
All right. And second by councillor Rutherford. Thank you, councillor Salvador. Any more questions?
No.
Got it. Councillor Stevenson?
Yes, yes, yes.
Sorry, I'm in person today. Thank you very much for the reports. Really quickly, just on the economic update, very exciting. We have finally hit a one million person population. I know we've been almost there for many, many years. So that's very exciting from the census. I was just wondering, and this is maybe for, for Ms. Muthiardi. We talked previously earlier in our term just about including some of the social equity indicators in our economic update. Just wondering if there's been any further work on that in terms of some of the, the indicators we could be looking at at council just to ensure that economic recovery is, is being experienced equitably across the city.
Thank you so much for the question. And that just raises, I guess, some challenges in terms of getting data at a CMA level to provide us with a sense of how, what the impact of the pandemic was on different groups. We are limited in the sense that we have a bit more detailed data on the, through the labor force survey. And that's something that was, was provided in chart form in the economic update. But for everything else, we're going to be reliant on the census to give us a sense of kind of where things, where things were in two, in two thousand twenty one. And also relying on more qualitative data, but unfortunately, providing regular releases of, of data that would indicate how different groups are recovering, what the impact was and where we are, it, it is very, we are very limited in that sense.
No, I appreciate that context. I know, I know, you know, the Social Planning Council, for example, they have their annual vital signs report and that does include Edmonton specific data. And I know that they pull from different partners. So for example, food bank usage. You know, the, just those, those pieces, I think, I think even just the, you know, those that are receiving social support from the provincial government, I believe those stats are fairly, fairly accessible. So, so maybe just, I don't know if you've had a chance to connect with Edmonton Social Planning Council, but that, that could be a great resource to maybe talk about. As you say, perhaps it's not quarterly, but at least some of those annual indicators of, of where we're at from an equity perspective. Great, great. And then just really quickly shifting into some of the, the carryforwards. I, I was, I guess I, I was just a bit surprised to see some of the, the amount of money that was left unspent for what are some really key priorities right now. So just wondering if the team can maybe speak to some of the challenges that have been experienced with mobilizing some of the resources. And I'm, I'm particularly interested in the one point nine million for day shelter space. Again, that's just such an, an urgent and critical need right now. I was unclear why that had been left unspent. Also with the shelter security and safe consumption site, you know, close to a quarter of a million dollars there in the Chinatown transformation strategy. Yeah, wondering if the team could speak to, to any challenges that, that led to these resources not being mobilized.
Councillor Ruff, you're jumping here. I could speak to the day shelters. That was funding that was allocated in twenty twenty one and the intention was that that would fund the day shelters from January till March of this year. So those funds have been spent now in the first quarter of twenty twenty two.
Oh, perfect. So they're, they've been allocated, they're spent. It was just rollover.
That's right.
Perfect. That's great to hear. Thank you. And then anything on the, the shelter security and safe consumption site allocation? Not to worry if that's a really specific question, but.
I don't have the specific details on that, but I'm assuming again, it was funding that was approved in twenty twenty one and then spent on the temporary shelters that carried forward into this year.
Okay, that's really great to hear. Thanks for that clarity and I'll, I'll yield the rest of my time. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Stevenson. Councillor Rutherford, can you take the chair?
So taken.
Thank you. So few questions. One on the, the, just following up on councillor Stevenson's question route. Is the economy working for all Edmontonians, right? Are people being left behind? I think we need to do more work and look forward to that work being kind of incorporated into a, into our budgeting process as we move forward. So I just want to observe that. The second is on the, on, on the debt limit. If I understand correctly, when I look at that chart, the, the seventy five percent threshold, is that based on our policies? Is that based on the MGA limit?
So the seventy five percent is, it's not based on the policy or the limit. What it is based on is the fact that we know and understand that when our borrowings are reviewed by Treasury Board and Finance, that that is a threshold that they look at before additional credit procedures are put in place on their side to approve our borrowings.
Got it. And, and the debt that we approved as part of supplemental budget for twenty twenty two is not included in this yet, right? If I understand correctly.
So the forecast for anything that was, that's already approved is in this table?
Okay, okay. Okay, that's, that's, that's good to know. And the, on the personal savings personnel that we haven't hired, large number of those savings come from Edmonton Transit. I just want to understand within that, one of the biggest areas where we have the highest amount of citizen dissatisfaction is Edmonton Transit Safety and Security, right? So I just want to understand within that personnel savings, are we properly, are we not, are we not? Are those savings coming from safety and security or are they coming from other areas of Edmonton Transit?
Mr. Mayor, the majority of those personnel savings came from operator hiring. And I can have Ms. Hutton McDonald provide a little bit of context around the timing. There was a backlog during COVID in terms of the recruiting process. So the, those weren't really tied to any of our, say, TPOs or safety personnel. It was more tied to the actual operator.
Well, that's all I need to know. I just wanted to make sure that we are not holding back on hiring security officers or not doing spending on safety and security. If it's ETS operators, that's a different thing because there could be a timing issue on that. So that's good to know because there are two areas that we have heard from citizens that are most dissatisfied. One is ETS, safety and security, other one is snow removal, right? I think, and I, we see, see some questions on that. I don't need to ask those questions on snow removal. Good. And I'll, I'll move the, the second round.
Just for clarity, it's the fourth round?
Is it the fourth round on this item? Wow. Fourth round. Can councillor Rutherford, can you, so I'll, I'll move the, the fourth round.
And do we need a second round for that?
Second.
Okay, so moved by Mayor Sohe, second by councillor Nack. Any questions or comment on the fourth round? Again, just want to be mindful from a meeting management perspective of all we have left to do. So with that in mind, let's call the vote.
I'm a no, Madam Clark.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton. We have all the votes.
Great. Please display the votes. And that is carried. Great.
And I'll take the chair back.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I think councillor Rice, you're next.
Thank you. This is actually is my second round. I didn't get, speak last time. So I do have another three questions. The first question is about so far and what's the number for our city's debt?
Just give me one second councillor to get to the debt sheets and the documents. So as of December thirty first, twenty twenty, the total outstanding debt for the city of Edmonton is three point five billion dollars.
So what's the impact for the states will carry to the tax rate?
So each time that you approve the use of debt for capital projects, we factor that into the tax levy increase, which you will recall we did in the fall, once those projects were approved. Often there's a lag between when you borrow and, or when you approve a project and then when the borrowing happens and when the debt servicing begins. So we adjust those debt servicing numbers every year through the supplementary operating and capital budget adjustments. But is your question, how much of the operating budget is going to debt servicing?
No, like I, my question is about how many, like what is the possible tax rate? And then as a result and for the debt.
So you, the, the, the debt servicing is already contemplated in the tax rate that you've established each year as part of the budget process?
And then for this impact for the two thousand twenty three, and do you have any sense what type of impact could result and as a, as a date?
So your approvals, your already approved capital projects are contemplated in the base budget already. So that question would depend on what council chooses to approve in capital budgets in terms of capital projects in the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty six cycle.
Okay. The next question, the next question is about the capital budget expenditures. And if we look at the budget cycle spending and then in two thousand twenty two, two, two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand twenty nine to two thousand twenty two, so, so far, our spending is about the seven point four billion. And there, there is four point three billion left. So just a question, how this four point three billion and can be spent in one year? And in the last year of budget cycle?
So it, I'll, I'll start and then I'll maybe ask Mr. Loughran to weigh in. So it is anticipated that we would spend the remainder of the capital budget in the next year. But the capital budgets do roll from year to year. So at the end of each year, we assess how much of the capital project will, we recash flow and we determine what will be spent in future years. And we undertake a similar carryforward process that you're seeing here today. But on the capital side, you approve those carryforwards with the supplementary capital budget adjustment.
I, I, nothing much to add other than there are, there's a large project that currently we're not making payments on based on performance. And so that's a significant reason for, for what you're seeing there as well.
Thank you for that clarification. So that's my questions. Thank you for the colleagues for your kindness. And this is my second round and to finish the financial questions.
Thank you, councillor Rice. So we have no more questions and we have a motion on the floor. And if you could, here we go. It's on the screen now. And before I call the vote, any questions or anyone to speak? I see councillor Rice, your name is that from the previous questions or?
From previous.
Okay, got it. All right. I see no more anyone line up. So please, I'll call the vote.
Just for clarity, you're voting on the recommendation in six two and six.
And six three.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Councillor Janz, we have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried. And if I could ask council members to, if somebody could move councillor Rutherford, if you could move to bring forward seven point eight?
Yes, I moved to bring forward item seven point eight. Second?
Second by councillor Stevenson. Any questions? Because this must be dealt with today. So that's the reason we are bringing it forward. Any questions on this? Seeing none, I'll call the vote.
It's coming.
No worries.
Councillor, yeah, we have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried. So item is brought forward now, right? So we can talk about it? Okay, is there a presentation on this from administration?
There's no presentation. There's no presentation.
Okay, this was exempted by Councilor Rutherford, so have, you have questions, Councilor Rutherford? Go ahead.
Yes, so uh, thank you for, for this. Was this something that is um. Procedural to the fall supplementary budget adjustment?
No, the alley lighting uh special tax is an annual bylaw that needs to be passed in order for us to levy the special tax.
So this bylaw has been passed before? Cuz I was under the, under the impression that the alley renewal. Program did not have any local tax levy.
Uh, yes, um, this is, this is an annual bylaw for lighting um in alleys and so. While we're now switching alley renewal. To be on the tax levy instead of by local improvement. This special tax bylaw has been something that has been part of an annual process for a number of years.
So we have done a localized tax for alley lighting?
Uh, yes, that's correct, and maybe I'll just ask Mr. Zabo to provide a little bit more detail.
Because I think that that local tax, just if I wanna jump in so I can make sure I get clarity to my question. Was, when it was initiated, cuz before the alley program had to be initiated. By the residents that backed onto that alley, so that's why the justification for that cost.
So, Councilor Rutherford, I appreciate uh the question that you're asking, so that's just the differentiation. Between, I think what you're discussing, which is alley renewal, so actually spending money to re- renew the infrastructure associated with the alley. And this, which is more of an operating cost to maintain lighting. So this is just to keep the, the lights going in the back alleys. We've had this charge uh on the, on accounts that have back alleys for, for decades. And it's usually a very small amount, it's like ten, twenty dollars maximum amount. The back alley reconstruction, that whole thing is a separate conversation. Yes, that has been approved by councils, an infrastructure project, to be funded a hundred percent from the tax levy.
Okay, I, I feel like. I'm, I'm more confused by those answers and I, and I, and I'm thinking maybe I'm misunderstanding, so. Just for clarity. We've had this tax before, because when I read even the name of the bylaws to impose a special tax. So is this a new special tax?
So special tax under the MGA must be imposed on an annual basis. So this is an annual process to impose a special tax, but it is a process that we do repeatedly year after year.
Okay, okay, that's good to clarify. And. It's imposed on everyone, or is it im- imposed only in a local improvement tax levy style?
So because it's a special tax, it's only applied to those property owners that have back alleys. And it's gonna be uh, be assessed to those property owners only.
So all, all property tax owners that have a back alley are taxed this annually?
Most, I'm not sure if it would be a hundred percent all of them, but most of them that have back alleys would be assessed as special tax, yeah. So special tax is a separate, is a special provision within the municipal government act of a, of a kind of tax, it isn't a local improvement levy. It's more to fund ongoing operating costs rather than infrastructure projects.
And if I could just add, it's Gortsever, it's only two alleys that have back alley lighting, because not all alleys have back alley lighting.
Oh, interesting. Yeah, no, I know that, I know it's for lighting, yeah, but uh. Okay, I, I think that's all of my questions. I, I would like to speak to this. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rutherford. Councilor Rice?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chair. Um, question is about, uh, I understand it's annual uh tax assessment is included. And is there any feedback and regarding this?
Um, are, are from homeowners, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, from homeowner.
I don't have that information in front of me. I'll defer to Mr. Zabo to see if he's aware of any of that information.
Counselor, I mean, uh, we don't typically hear too much about this charge, certainly every year, you know, we receive uh thousands of inquiries about various different tax questions. And this may be asked, what is this charge? But it's not typically uh, a, a big concern, because it is such a small amount, uh, you know, it's somewhere between five and, and twenty dollars maximum. It's not a very large charge on people's bills, so. They understand what it's for, once they understand what it's for, there's typically not further concern being expressed.
Uh, so the concern actually I heard uh is about um. The charge, yes, like you mentioned, is not too significant. And however, how we respond and to the lighting and broken and then uh, that's his big concern. So do we have?
So, Counselor, that would be a service issue that we would have to um, deal with our contractors on, but it wouldn't impact this bylaw.
Um, okay, uh, so I understand as a for bylaw, yes, I, I have no problem for bylaw, I just want to, to broaden that concern. And then when we discussing this bylaw and to ensure and then our. Property owners paid the tax, they receive the services. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rice. All right, I see no more questions on this. And Counselor Rutherford, would you like to move it or? Or, or if you have que- uh.
Can I move it and vote no to it?
I can go to Councilor Cardinal to move it. Councilor Cardinal?
Uh, actually, point of order on this, there's a recommendation, should that be first or uh, does it matter?
Just, yeah, I believe so, but just, can you just let me call up the report, please? I just have it.
This is Ingrid Johnson from Law. Yes, the recommendation has to be dealt with before the bylaw gets its readings.
Which one is that? Where's the recommendation?
So it's for item seven point eight, Mr. Mayor, so the recommendation, I'll just read it out in case somebody wants to put it on, but whoever puts it on the floor should not be speaking against it. Just for clarity, so the, the twenty-two, twenty, twenty twenty-two operating expenditure and revenue budget within parks and roads and services, city operations. Specific, that, if that can be dealt with first of all, please.
Okay, so it's the recommendation within the bylaw that.
The recommendation has to get dealt with, and then if, if that passes, then you can deal with the bylaw.
Got it. Councilor Cardinal?
Yeah, I'll move the recommendation in item seven point eight.
Thank you, Councilor Cardinal, second by. We need a second for.
Second.
Council, Council Tank. Got it. So, Councilor Rutherford, you wanna speak to the recommendation or you wanna speak to the bylaw?
I'm wanna speak to the bylaw.
Bylaw, okay. So, Councilor Rutherford can speak to the bylaw when it's that moved, right? Okay. Any questions on the recommendation? Seeing none, I'll call the vote.
Just waiting for one.
Yeah.
Counselor Jans? We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried.
Mayor Sohe, I'll move first reading of bylaw one nine nine seven four.
Thank you, Councilor Cardinal, second by.
Second.
Council Tank. Any questions and I'll go to Counselor Rutherford to speak.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I will, I will be brief. This does cause me pause, I think there are certain things. That taxpayers expect from their base taxes as core services, and I feel like lighting and infrastructure and even in the maintenance and repair of lighting. Falls within that, and I feel like these kind of one-off um taxes. Become very, very much a slippery slope and accumulate to what we're seeing is a lot of. Edmontonians feeling like their taxes are really high and we're, we're pushing people to the limits. And so, uh, I cannot support this bylaw, I was already concerned about some of the. Localized tax levies that were putting on residents for uh neighborhood renewal. And this to me. Uh, while it isn't, you know, what we say, what administration said is a nominal amount. It's significant for many folks in Edmonton. And I think this should be part of our core budget, our core operating budget. Um, as a basic core service, so that is why I will be voting no to this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rutherford. I'll call the vote now. Oh, sorry, Councilor Rice, you just clicked on? To speak to this?
Uh, yes, I will speak this. Uh, so I will not support this bylaw as well, and then. Uh, the same reason as Counselor Rutherford mentioned. And also, I would like to see the services or contract management improve. And to ensure our taxpayers and to receive the core services for the taxes they paid. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rice. I see no one else, so I'll call the vote.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried.
Mayor Sohe, I'll move second reading of bylaw one nine nine seven four.
Thank you, Councilor Cardinal, second by Council Tank, right?
Yes, second.
Thank you, Council Tank. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried ten to three.
Mayor Sohe, I'll move consideration of third reading of bylaw one nine nine seven four.
Second.
Council Tank seconded it. Consideration for third reading, please. Please vote.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. Consideration is granted.
Mayor Sohe, I'll move third and final reading of bylaw one nine nine seven four.
Second.
Second by Councilor Tank. See no questions, I'll call the vote.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried. All right. So if it is the will of. Council. And it's only for voting purposes, I understand from Council, right? We could actually deal with those uh. Two committee. Me, uh, reports. Is that okay?
Sure, yeah, I can move that we uh bring forward items six-nine and six-ten.
I think we have to do individually, right? Or can we do them together?
They were dealt with at committee together, so they can be dealt with together.
Okay, six-ten and six, six-nine and six-ten. Council Stevenson moved to bring them forward, seconded by. Second by Council Rice. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote.
Sorry, point of order, it's saying the bylaw to authorize?
It's just, it's not, that's not what it's for.
Okay, just double check.
We're, we're flying so fast, he scrubs just one vote behind.
There you go, okay. Please, okay, everyone voted?
Sorry, everybody's voted.
Display the votes, please. That is carried. Okay, these were at community services committee meeting. And Council Cardinal, you, you were away for the morning, right? Yeah, uh, Counselor Jans, you wanna say something about uh these two items to introduce them? Are we just voting? We can just, we don't have to do the introduction? Okay, will someone move the uh? Uh, the uh, do, 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 recommend.
Mr. Mayor.
Six point nine, six-ten, yeah.
I sign on to speak.
Oh, you wanna speak, somebody have to move it, move them first, somebody willing to move at comi-
Still moved?
No, so I'm sorry. Okay. All right.
So just, just to be clear, is somebody putting um both motions for six-nine and six-ten on the floor?
We need to put the motion on the floor.
You don't, you don't have to, just have a discussion, but it would be. That's what you want, I thought it was coming forward for voting purpose.
I think that's what my understanding was, that we are just voting on this.
Okay, well, apologies, I thought you wanted someone to introduce it, I was happy to do that, but.
Okay. That's fine. So we have a motion on the floor now?
Uh, it hasn't yet been seconded and then we can put it on the floor.
Second.
Second, Counselor, second by Councilor Rutherford. Okay. So, Council Tank, you're still on the board?
Oh, okay, well, I'll be, I'll be really quick. Um, I think I just want to, you know, I, I felt like last time there was perhaps a bit of a misunderstanding from some of. Council colleagues who maybe joined the meeting halfway. Um, but I just wanna do a quick recap, so this was a dumb, a joint delegation between administration and two advisory committees, so it was a really unique approach. And I hope this partnership way of working together continues on this file and others, of course. We discussed how a robust vehicle for hire policy is really important for equity. And in some ways, we're actually being proactive as we recover from the pandemic and more people will be heading out and using various modes of transportation. And we heard from a variety of community members about their experiences as women, uh, from the accessibility committee and from seniors. Um, and at the end of the day, it's about safer, more accessible and more affordable ways of getting around the city. We also heard clearly from WAVE and the accessibility committee on key priorities they like to really focus on. Both groups highlighted training for drivers, which is a low hanging fruit, given there's a lot of traction in this space, and in many ways, we have materials developed already. WAVE also identified a strong complaint process as a priority, and the accessibility committee talked about safety measures like audible meters as another priority. Above all, we heard from these advocates that they have been working with administration on this topic for a long time. They would like to see more accountability for this work to move forward. And that's why I had put forward this motion that you see here today. And I wanna be able to set the expectation for the administration to really reach out to the accessibility committee and WAVE, continue that partnership approach. And ask how committee and community members want to be engaged in this policy work. How they wanna prioritize and how they see um this, you know, partnership approach with implementation of the rest of the work plan included in the report. And uh, you know, uh, and report, ultimately report back to uh committee. Sorry, to, to city council committee. Um, there's also a subsequent that I know we're gonna, we're gonna be voting on as well. While in my opinion is redundant and selective on priorities, which is why I didn't support it during committee. However, it's, it's the will of this council to really drive home the point here, especially uh focus on training, which is a low hanging fruit. Uh, then I will be supportive. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and that's it.
Thank you, Council Tank. Seeing no more, I'll call the vote. On six-nine and six-ten.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried. Okay, now we're going to, going back to six point five?
We ca- we can, so just a friendly reminder that this was a council orientation item that was actually originally scheduled to go to a non-regular council meeting that we had to cancel. Uh, because the previous council meeting needed more time, so happy to move to the next.
So if, yeah, really don't wanna waste councils' time on uh, on orientation today, right, so we can actually uh. Which. Cuz orientations are usually longer, right, so. Uh, where would you suggest that we send this to?
Well, the next item on your agenda is six-six, the direct control zoning for Glenora Heritage, there's actually a motion on the floor that was laid over from February twenty-second to twenty-fourth. But I'll just defer perhaps to um the acting city manager and see if there is some timeset, anything that is time sensitive perhaps in the private items, or if there's anything else that needs to be dealt with. In the remaining hour and a half for today's council meeting. Or if there's anything else that needs to be dealt with in the remaining hour and a half for today's council meeting. Other than that, we can just move in the order of the agenda.
Okay, so let me get it right, six point five. Econo- collaborative economic development initiative, all this orientation. Um, can we not send this to another committee where we have more time? Sorry, uh, uh, to council meeting where you more, have more time, is that what you're suggesting?
That's, that is a possibility, I'm not sure if that works for Ms. McCabe.
Oh, I see, okay.
I'm just.
Mr. Mayor, can we move to, it doesn't have to be done today, it is a bit of a longer presentation. Uh, it is the same presentation that's been given to other councils that are involved, uh, in the collaborative economic development initiative. So we can move it off of today's agenda.
Let's move it off today's agenda, then we can talk offline and figure it out, because not everybody needs this orientation. Uh, only new council members may require, so let's figure out a better way of u- to utilization of council's time, so just, uh.
Why don't we just refer that one back to administration, and then we'll deal with it from there?
Let's refer it back, somebody moved that.
So moved.
Constable Cartmel, as Constable Stevenson seconded. Okay, any questions on the referral? Seeing none, please, I'll, I'll call the vote.
I mean, yes, Madam Clerk.
Thanks, Counselor Picat.
Okay, everyone voted? Display the votes.
Everybody's voted.
Yeah. That is carried, okay, referred. All right, now we are going into six point six, right? Direct control DC one zoning, Glanora Heritage Character Area. This was selected by Consul Nak. It was postponed from February twenty second, twenty fourth. Excuse me. Constable Nak, you don't need a presentation on this, this was debated at the committee.
Uh, I just have a, a restated motion I would like to make, uh, just based on some conversation, so. At the appropriate time, happy to do that.
Is this the restated, uh, motion that is on the screen?
Just for clarity, this is the motion on the floor, so Counselor Nak, are you asking the assembly, um, to, with unanimous consent, withdraw it? So you can restate your motion with the two parts?
Yes, that would be my, my goal, if, if, uh, council will permit, I'd like to add a second part, so I'd like to withdraw this and make a motion.
Is everyone okay, unanimously okay for this to be withdrawn? That doesn't require a motion, right?
If it's unanimous, with unanimous consent.
Everyone seems to be okay, so this is withdrawn.
We're just gonna put it back up on the screen, Counselor Nak, if you don't mind reading it out.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to read it out, and once I see it there. Sorry for the awkward silence, I just don't have the, uh, the full wording of part two, because it was in the chat there.
We've got it, we'll put it on the screen.
Thank you so much.
Uh, so number one is the same as before, that administration resume work to prepare direct control. DC one zoning for the Glanora Heritage Character Area in alignment with the city plan goals of increased density. While encouraging the retention of heritage resources and ensuring new development respects the form enassing of the Garden City suburb. And that this work be funded up to a hundred thousand dollars by the twenty twenty one council contingency. And number two, that a service package be considered to allow for further community-specific heritage work across the city. In alignment with the heritage resource management strategy. And I'll introduce it once I get a seconder.
Second. Second by Constable Cartmel.
Uh, thank you, so, um, again, yeah, this has been, uh, pushed off now, in fact, for a full two months. We, we talked about it even in January, so, um, not looking to, to revisit much of that discussion. But just as a reminder to members of council. This work started actually back in about twenty fifteen, uh, with then Consul McKean. Uh, looking to advance different ways for the city to deal with heritage preservation. And, uh, the challenge we have consistently run up against is there's sort of really only two main tools we have available to us. And, and one of which is, uh, through the, the grants that we offer, which from my understanding is one of the most, uh, robust grant programs across the country. And the other is through zoning tools. And so, over the years, there was different motions put forward to explore different ideas, different options. Uh, and it really came back to that for all of the citywide work, and this is not specific to Glanora. We need to, um, use the zoning tool as well. Uh, so this work started a number of years back in collaboration with the community and the Glanora Conservation Association. And, uh, the work was going on and, and going along fairly well, except to be fair. Uh, there was a concern and an update was brought forward to council, uh, last term, at the end of last term. And there were some concerns that the direct control zoning that was being worked on. Uh, was not going to allow for the density that we strive for as outlined in the city plan. So while it would have helped with the heritage preservation piece, it wouldn't have addressed the other goal that I think we all have. Um, at least based on our conversations over the last sort of five months. Uh, so the idea here was to say, yes, the heritage preservation piece is important. There's ways to do built form that don't restrict the level of density that we strive for. And so, uh, the work was put on pause because of this uncertainty in that, uh, really the fact that it wasn't fully aligned with the city plan. Uh, and then this came back to council for, for our decision. And so in my mind, uh, why I'm putting this forward here, and why I've worded the motion the way I did, is that, uh, heritage preservation does not have to be at the expense of densification. And the way this motion is worded ensures that that is the case, so that we will not be choosing one or the other. We can actually choose both going forward. Uh, and the reason I have added a second point is that, uh, while there is going to be a discussion for this council at the end of this year. Related to the heritage resource management strategy, and, and if we wanna fund that. Uh, there's other communities that need work as well. It just so happened that Glanora was first in the prioritization list. Uh, when this work had been done over the last eight years. But there's plenty of other work we can be doing across the city, and I think we need to consider that. Uh, in, in, uh, combination with this other body of work. And I'll explain a little bit of that more in detail when I get to closing, but, but just again worth reminding that. Um, the heritage resource management strategy, I think, is going to be important work, I think council will need to fund it. But the end result is not going to tell us much difference in terms of the tools available to us. The tools available to us, uh, to help with heritage preservation, uh, are fairly limited. And so we know one of them is going to be using zoning. And so I'm not expecting a different outcome at the end of that strategy work. So I think it is worth going through not just this community, but many other communities that have heritage properties. That need that preservation work, so, uh, again, that's the idea behind adding the second point. Again, it will ultimately be a council decision at the, at the budget. Uh, and probably I should have specified that in point two, now that I reflect on it, because somebody needs to do a friendly amendment, uh, to, to just make sure that it's considered as part of the budget process. Uh, that would be very much a friendly amendment to me. Uh, but I think we'll need to make those decisions, because my biggest worry, and I'll stress this again in closing. Is that, um, we've been talking about heritage preservation as a city. For fifteen, twenty-plus years. We have documents from two thousand and seven that outline some of the tools available to the city to help deal with heritage preservation. That we haven't really used, like zoning. Uh, so I, I don't want to get to a situation where we approve this body of work. And then are waiting years and years and years on top of more than the decade, if not two decades. Um, to actually start preserving heritage properties. But again, to be very clear, while not limiting density. Because that is why that wording has been put in there. If this were to restrict density, I would not have put this motion forward. This motion ensures that density is done in combination with heritage preservation. So happy to take questions, and I'll close it on it on the appropriate time, thank you.
Thank you, Constable Nak, I'll go to Consul Rutherford for questions.
Yeah, so my first question was, why is, why was point two not the recommendation from the, the report? Which read that administration prepare an unfunded service package for consideration. As part of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six budget process to fund the preparation of a new historic resource management plan as outlined in attachment two.
Counselor Rutherford, is that a question for administration?
No, it was a question for Counselor Nak.
I think the second part was approved.
My apologies.
Sorry, I, I also thought it was a question for administration, so my fault. Uh, so again, I think we already approved the motion to, to have the heritage resource management strategy. Coming forward to council for consideration, so this would be just a subsequent body of work that would be happening at that time.
Is that correct?
Yeah, there were two parts to the initial motion from committee, and we divided them into two. The second one was already approved, that's my understanding, maybe administration can confirm that?
The part that was already approved was to bring forward a service package for the heritage strategy. Uh, for that to be funded through the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six budget cycle.
Okay.
The was not approved was the resuming of the work, which is the motion on the floor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would request that these two be split, and, uh, so question to the mover. With the use of a DC one. And our discussion on equity, what are some considerations there that you think need to be made around an equity piece, uh, across the whole city?
So for me, one of the biggest, and, and I think this was flagged in, in the work last year when it came forward, is that the DC one is written would not have allowed for the same level of density as outlined in our city plan, which would not have been equitable. Uh, I think with this, at a, at a minimum, it allows for the same level of density. But I would go one step further in saying that if you're going to allow for a unique, um, built form. That also should mean you should be open to potentially even slightly more than what's outlined in the city plan. So, somebody wants to have a five thousand square foot heritage home and divvy that up into ten homes. Uh, that might not actually be allowed as per sort of our original plans. But I think that would be a completely reasonable expectation, uh, if we're going to allow the preservation of the home, but to allow for far more units. So I think that's the way you balance out the equity pieces.
I was, I was thinking more neighborhood to neighborhood equity, so I guess my question to administration is, who initiated this DC one?
Um, I believe it was council, uh, quite some time ago, uh, who initiated this. And when we brought the report, report forward, that was one thing that administration did flag, is that our work in, uh, the equity field has really advanced. Um, and we had some concerns with, uh, continuing to do this work, uh, right now. Until we had the heritage strategy done, and we could put an equity lens on the heritage strategy to help inform this work.
Because, while I would never not argue that Glanora is historically important. There's other neighborhoods that are historically significant that do not have DC ones, is that correct, Ms. McCabe?
Um, there are, yes, uh, there is, uh, West Mount, I believe, does have a DC one, so there's a mixture.
Does Oliver have a DC one?
Uh, someone from the team answered that question?
Hi, the Oliver does not currently have a, a heritage DC one, it's covered by other specific zoning. Uh, some of the heritage areas that do have, uh, DC ones to provide that extra level of direction. Include most recently West Mount, uh, and Church Street, Garnow is also another one. There are, there are a mixture of heritage.
But there's usually been community, there's usually been community residents that have, uh, gathered to, to kind of push that DC one over with the public hearings, is that correct?
That's correct, and, and much like in Glanora where it was really a community advocacy. Uh, piece of work that led to council directing further study and work, and ultimately a DC one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Rutherford, Constable Tang?
Yeah, thank you, just two quick questions, uh, one for Ms. Papery. Uh, is twenty twenty-one council contingency, just wanna make sure that we still have space in that?
Uh, you do still have funding in council contingency.
How much?
Um, my recollection is seven hundred thousand, but let me double check that.
And, uh, just to confirm, we haven't touched twenty twenty-two council contingency, right?
Twenty twenty-two, I believe, has already been fully allocated in the budget.
Okay, I think I'm getting some of the motions mixed up here, but, um, and then as, as Ms. Papery look at that info, uh, I guess Ms. McCabe. Um, you know, recognize that we have this overarching strategy going on in the city. Um. Do you, do you feel that this essentially challenges that overarching work, uh, kind of, it is a one, one-off thing?
We don't know at this time, and so administration's recommendation was, the strategy work was either well underway and or complete. Um, prior to pausing this DC.
Yeah.
Work.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Constable Tang, Constable Stevenson?
Uh, thank you, I just, um, Ms. McCabe, could you remind me again, I think the team confirmed that proceeding with the DC one at this point would slow down some of the other heritage work that's, um, underway?
Mr. Schneider, could you speak to that?
Absolutely, uh, so cancer, if the, uh, the funding that is, uh, contained in this motion, uh, flows through. We don't anticipate that will slow down work. Um, if there wasn't funding attached to this motion, then the work would be impacted, it would impact other pieces of work, but, um, not as the motion currently constructed on the floor, um, we're confident work can proceed.
Okay, I'm just, I will just speak to the motion, uh, when the time is appropriate.
No problem, thank you, Constable Stevenson, Constable Rice?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chair, uh, I do have few question need clarification. Um, so, I understand, and more, uh, for mover, I mentioned about why, uh, this passed. Uh, in the past few years, and with the uncertainty. And is there any other reason, and from financial perspective, and also from priority for the city service perspective, and for us to pass this, and why we need to resume right now? To administration, thank you.
Administration's recommendation, Consul Rice, was that we continue to pause this, uh, work while we do the heritage strategy. Uh, and then we would, uh, make a recommendation to council on whether this work was best to proceed. Uh, looking at equity across the city, as well as looking at what the right tools are to use for heritage. So it was administration's recommendation to continue to pause.
Okay, so is that decision still on the floor for council to make?
The motion that's on the floor is to un-pause the work, um, and provide funding, uh, in order for us to be able to un-pause the work.
Uh, maybe my question should get clarification from Mr. Chair. And for, uh, administration recommendation still, uh, in order and for us to make a decision?
So, when we debated this issue at council last time, we did move a part of the recommendation from council to continue the work on the heritage resource management strategy. So that has been already approved, but this is, uh, being initiated by Constable Nak because of the, uh, the DC two work was passed, paused by the previous council, now we wanna resume that work. So, uh, uh, Constable Nak, uh, probably can provide you a perspective on why, as he said in the, in the opening remarks on this work. Why it's necessary?
Uh, be mindful of my time, as I'm going to my next question.
Okay.
So, my next question is, so how those work resumes will contribute to increase it a density and in the neighborhoods?
So, if this motion passes, it does direct us to do the work slightly differently, in that we would look at options to increase density. So that will be a bit of a rethink. However, if this motion doesn't pass, uh, what will happen is we will develop, and, and if, uh, the strategy work is funded by council. We will develop a strategy that'll help inform what are the right tools, uh, in order to advance, um, equity in our city. As well as to advance the city plan.
Um, this is, uh, this is the point. This is, this is the point I really confused unless I missed something. The message I heard is from different meetings is different. And for some meet, for other meeting, I heard this type of sense will not contribute increased density. But for this one, I heard this will contribute a density. I just want to make sure the message city council discuss or talk about and is consistent and send it to the public. I am not fully understand. I still have confusion for this. But I will yield my time and to listen to my colleagues' question and answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rice. Counselor Nak, you?
Just a few questions.
You have questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, and maybe to, to answer that question by asking a question. I, I think the original DC one as written, while it provided some opportunities for increased in density, it was very limited and not in, in not meeting with the goals in the city plan. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Yeah, I think at most it was allowing for secondary suites and garden suites, but it wasn't allowing for more substantive built forms or at least more substantive unit count. Maybe within a built form of a larger building. That was not originally part of any of the, the DC one except along 102nd Avenue where I think they, they had identified that.
That's correct, counselor.
So by wording the motion this way, this gives you that ability to go back and work on that plan to ensure they aren't restricting unit count while still trying to address the, the heritage preservation goals.
That's correct, but it's still outstanding about whether this is the best tool for heritage preservation goals. The team will tell you designation is one of the best tools.
Absolutely. And so that was going to be just my, my next set of questions here, which is that, you know, and we've done this work now for, I mean, and I don't think it's an exaggeration to say there's been this work ongoing within the city for about 20 years about trying to determine what the right tools are to deal with heritage preservation, right? We've had numerous, I mean, even in my eight years, we've had numerous reports on different ways to try to preserve heritage. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's definitely an area that we've been trying to find what the right tools are for preservation. It still remains that designation is one of those best tools.
Absolutely. And I guess maybe to that question with, with the grants that are available, we are already, from what I understand, I think we had a previous report. Edmonton is one of the best, if not the best in the country in terms of the, the financial resources we allot to the grants for heritage preservation. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
And yeah, unfortunately, we still run into that struggle of, of, of not as much preservation as I think we strive for as a city, which is part of why I think there were motions done in the last two terms around other tools to look at. Is that fair?
That's a fair assessment, yes.
And, and I guess the, the, the big question I asked this, I think, two months ago at the committee, but I, I absolutely think we need to do the, the broader Heritage Resource Management Strategy work and, and we'll make that pitch at budget at the appropriate time. But I, I also want to set realistic expectations that, you know, it, it is unlikely considering many of the folks who have helped craft the reports over the last eight and more years are some of the same folks working with us today, that we're not necessarily going to find a, a new tool. I mean, there, there's, we've, we've looked at best practices in other cities. We've looked at various ways. It's, it's the way you employ those tools, which, which may be different through the strategy, but we're not going to see suddenly somebody saying, oh, we, we missed this after the last 20 years. There's, this is the one thing that, that nobody caught. I, I don't think we're expecting to see some sort of new approach. Is that, is that fair?
I, I don't quite, it's not quite fair. I'm not sure yet. I think we've got to do the work to understand and with the new zoning bylaw renewal underway as well, there might be some other options. I remain open to the fact that there could be other things we haven't explored yet.
I'd love to see that. I guess I'm just wondering through all of the work that we've done in exploring best practices in other cities, exploring different tools here. I, I've just, my, my biggest worry frankly is that we're going to, we're, we're going to not uncover something new in part because there's been really thorough amount of work done on this over the last two decades. And, and so if we come up with something wonderful, but I, I'm just wondering how likely that actually is considering the fact that we've done all of this work that we've done to date.
I don't know yet, and that's why administration recommends that we do a heritage strategy. I want to honor the work that the team has done to date, but we want to bring it all together into one strategy that is a modern, progressive approach to retaining our heritage assets in the way that gets us the most that gives us the right level of funding to be able to honor our past while we move forward as a city.
Absolutely.
If I may just add to that, Counselor Nak, one of the things that we do expect out of the Heritage Resource Management Plan as well is how we prioritize the actions that we take to support, whether they're area-wide heritage areas, individual buildings, whether they're residential, commercial or institutional and cultural as well. And that's the, the, and that's also where we will bring in the equity piece in terms of how we deal with and not deal with, but address and preserve our heritage components in the city.
Thank you, Counselor Nak. Counselor Rutherford, can you take the chair?
So taken.
So I, as you know, I have been a biggest supporter of infill. And we also need to make sure that we are preserving the, 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 that heritage character of not only Glanora, but there are other very important neighborhoods in our city that needs protection. So I'm just trying to understand sometimes our policies are rigid in a way that we don't have neighborhood localized flexibility to make sure that we are achieving both the, the preserving the character of those neighborhoods, but at the same time not compromising on the infill opportunities. So I just want to understand as you resume this work on the heritage resource management and how this DC zoning specifically to Glanora could provide us some learning lessons that we actually do the same, do both, but do in a way that they respect the localized realities and, and context.
That is absolutely something we can consider as we work through this. Mr. Mayor, as we work through if this was to be un-pause and or if we were to do the strategy work first and then un-pause this DC.
But can it be done concurrently in a way that you learn from that aspect of DC work in the neighborhood that could be, those lessons could be applied to say Inglewood, other neighborhoods that, that also deserve the same kind of preservation that Glanora residents have been asking for?
Absolutely, it could be. I think it would still remain administration's recommendation that we do a little bit of the heritage work prior to un-posing this to help set the, you know, higher level strategy associated with that. But if it was the will of council, absolutely, we could have one inform the other.
Yeah, because that's, that's the one that I'm thinking about, like why this work might be actually necessary and important to and I appreciate Counselor Nak's comments around the neighborhood would have to accept the density. It is not one or the other. I think that is absolutely critical and I is that your understanding as well of this motion that it is not pausing density or applications that might be coming up for a review to, to administration or to council?
That is correct. That is my understanding. If this motion was to pass, that there would be in an increase in density from work that has been contemplated before.
And, and the applications that might be in the process as this work being done will continue to proceed, right? Those applications won't be put on pause.
That's correct, but administration will still work with homeowners as well to encourage them to designate their properties.
Okay. Good. Okay, that's how we needed to know because I look back on our first time home buyers program, right? Reflecting on that over the last 10 years. I think that the, the way it was, it was so rigid in a way that they would, we lost sometimes the local context in giving some flexibility to neighborhoods at the same time accepting the, the density target. So I just want to understand if this will allow us to have that kind of a local context. So yeah, no good. Thank you. I'll take the chair back. Thank you. And I'll go to Counselor Salvador.
Oh, apologies. I'm just to speak.
Oh, just to speak?
Yeah, yeah.
And will you move the second round? Or just, or Counselor Stevenson to speak, Counselor Rutherford to speak or two questions? You have more questions? So we need a second round?
Yeah, happy to move to second round.
Counselor Salvador move second round, seconded by Counselor?
Stevenson.
Stevenson? Any questions on the second round? Seeing none, please vote.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried 12 to 1. All right, I'll go to Counselor Rutherford.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, some of your lines of questioning just tweaked some, some further questions I'd like to ask to administration. You know, with the intent of the motion before us right now around that juxtaposition with heritage and, and density, what kind of appetite do you see from industry in, in, in? Like what is the pragmatic application of taking a historical home and making it, you know, five units, but not breaking the shell per se? Will there be appetite for that?
I'm not sure. Anybody from the team have a? It costs a lot. It's not, go ahead, somebody.
Yeah, this Eric Box from here, I, I'd say that there is the potential that, that increasing the density actually leads to the demolition of more historic homes because, you know, just it's, you know, if you're going to mobilize to do a big construction project, might as well tear the thing down and put up something new that has the five or six units or whatever it is. There's, there are these unanticipated consequences and, and things that, that will need to be thought out citywide in the context of the zoning bylaw project as well.
Yeah, because we have to, we always have to be, you know, and actually, wait, I'd like to ask another question of Ms. McCabe. There was one of the zoning bylaw reports, I, I can't remember what they were. They were sort of the research reports that were done talked about zoning and kind of actually racism and inequity. Could you speak to some of how zoning tools can actually perpetuate that? Including if there's any comments on DC ones?
Absolutely. I think the very basic premise of zoning is to create separation in our city. Separation of uses is where it started from. And unfortunately, over time, it did create some sort, it's created some separation of people within our city because of the way that the, the zoning bylaws applied to allow potentially only for single-family homes in one neighborhood of a certain size. So it's only a certain kind of people who can live there because it's only certain type of people who can afford to live in that, that area. So this is some of the work that we're doing right now through the zoning bylaw renewal is really looking to deconstruct how our city is built in a way that can be more equitable and inclusive. And we're on this journey and it does mean increased density in most neighborhoods in our city so that you can create different housing types across the city. And we want to do that in a way that doesn't just apply to one neighborhood, but applies to many different neighborhoods.
So with the intent of this motion, like we're, we're kind of talking about the bylaw, but the bylaw would have to come back to public hearing, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, the bylaw would have to come back to public hearing.
So we, you, you, we could do this motion today. Administration creating more work for administration to have this bylaw come back and realize again that there's no way to increase density whilst also preserving to the level of a DC one. That could be a potential outcome, correct?
Could be a potential outcome, yes. We also might want to do a bit of work and return to committee if we get down that path before we show up with another DC.
Okay. And again, I'm just, I know I'm, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of historical context to this. So this, you said that this was council-driven by the, probably the previous counselor who represented this area.
That's correct.
So it wasn't administration identifying Glanora as the most historically significant neighborhood to require at this point?
No, not at this point. And this is why we're recommending strategy work to be able to look at all of our heritage neighborhoods in our city and determine what the right tools are in order to preserve our heritage character in our neighborhoods.
And how many, again, can you remind council, how many houses in Glanora currently have designation?
It's, Counselor Rutherford, it's three and there are about 137 that are on the inventory, but there are only three that have designation in the study area.
And have we heard feedback as to why they're not getting that designation?
Um, there's various reasons and one is just the property value and the ability for our grants and the desire for redevelopment to compete all with each other.
Okay, great. Thank you. That answers my questions. Appreciate the second round.
Thank you, Counselor Rutherford. So Counselor Salvador to speak, Counselor Stevenson speak, and Counselor Nak to close.
Sorry, I hear, I have one more question based on that. Sorry, I have to ask.
Okay, Counselor Nak, go ahead.
And it just feels more appropriate to ask him the question than speak to it, but, but I just want to read that last point around why Glanora was selected because there, there had actually been a body of work done through reports that outlines sort of a prioritized approach to communities that would need work. So I, I, I think the way I, I interpreted the last response is it made it sound like, you know, Glanora was sort of picked for the sake of it being picked, but council made that decision based off a body of work that identified the fact that Glanora had 137 homes on the heritage inventory, which made up, I think, you know, over 10% of the, of the property and was by far and away the most represented in that area. So, so it wasn't just sort of done at the will of one counselor. It was done based on a body of work. Is that? That was my recollection, but I'd like to just confirm that.
Counselor Nak, yes, there was some high-level work that was done, but it was a motion that was put on the floor, put on the floor by the ward counselor.
Yeah, and, and but based on the, the information that had been presented on citywide work, we had done a lot of citywide reports that helped to inform why that neighborhood was selected first.
There was some high-level work that was done to inform it. That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, I just want, yeah, just, just to make sure that was, that was clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nak. Counselor Paquette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. So depending on how this, this motion goes, you know, I'm just thinking about last night, our conversations around a new build just off 124th Street there and I'm just wondering, Ms. McCabe, how we move forward. So, you know, of course, can't presuppose the results of this motion, but if it fails, how do we move forward in a way that more accurately reflects residents' desire to see sort of this heritage component preserved?
Well, Counselor Paquette, if this passes or if it fails, administration will continue to work with homeowners to designate their property because that remains the most effective tool in order to preserve heritage character in our neighborhoods. So we'll continue to do that. We'll continue to bring the service package forward for council's consideration through the 2023 to 2026 budget cycle for the heritage strategy work to be, to be funded, for us to be able to come up with a citywide approach that both honors the city plan as well as honors the work that we've been doing with GBA plus approaches within the department.
Okay, yeah, but I'm just thinking specifically of new builds that we see come forward that, you know, we requested that the builder maybe have it more conform to a heritage look. And they make some nods toward it, but it's generally for a lot, in a lot of cases, quite unsatisfying. And it gets moved forward anyway. And so that heritage look of the neighborhood is not retained. And so I understand why this motion is being brought forward, especially in light of last night's decision. So I'm just wondering if you can expand on that, like? it just doesn't feel like we've got a lot of tools to not, and I'm not just talking about preserving what's already there, but preserving the look and feel of the neighborhood. So just some thoughts on that?
Well, I'd start with preserving the look and feel of the neighborhood isn't just about the houses in the neighborhood, it's also about the trees. It's also about the roads, it's also about the sidewalks. And so as part of that heritage strategy work, we do need to look at what are what are the right things to preserve. It could be the width of the road. Um, it could be a park that's really important um within that neighborhood. And so I would say that it's not just the the houses uh that creates that heritage feel within the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, and not just the houses, but I mean, maybe take a one more crack at it, maybe I'm being obtuse. But um, so let's say a new build goes in, it's uh infill, it's increasing in density. Maybe it's larger than uh some of the um builds uh along it because it's a a multi-unit. But if it doesn't fit with the uh, you know, the character of the area as far as builds go, residents uh become concerned. But if it does conform a little bit more, um there tends to be more acceptance. So I'm just thinking about avenues to actually smooth the way for density and uh this might be one of them. And and maybe I'm off off the mark, and if I am, please let me know.
Maybe. Um, what I would say is that the team has uh really taught me about when you look at heritage preservation, that there's a continuum of heritage preservation. So if you can keep the entire house um and not move that house, that is the best and it's designated. And then if you are to just do what you're suggesting, there's perhaps some look and feel and heritage, uh, a nod to heritage, that's not true heritage preservation um in our city. And so we might continue to see that, that might be some of the trade-offs that we get with density. And I think that's part of the work of what we could do, councillor, as we go forward in the space.
Okay, so that makes a lot more sense. Uh, it's like going to, say, Disney World, and you walk around all the different uh countries. Those aren't actual countries, even though they look similar to the type of architecture they have. Uh, is that sort of the point?
That's a good analogy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Constable Paquette. All right, so we have council members to speak to it. I'll go to Consulor Salvador, and I would request that if we could be precise and concise in our speaking notes, I mean, in in our speaking to this, then we can probably get to other items as well. So, Constable Salvador.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, just on, just Consul, uh, Constable Gens, you step, just sign on to speak or to questions?
To speak, please.
Okay, got it. Constable Salvador, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Um, yeah, so I want to just start by thanking Constable Nak for bringing this forward, and I I do appreciate the intent of the motion. Um, however, I do have some concerns around the timing of this DC, given the ongoing work towards zoning bylaw renewal. Um, and I do believe that the larger body of work associated with the Heritage Resource Management Strategy must take precedence. Um, one of the things that I am really excited about when it comes to the Heritage Resource Management Strategy is the focus that is going to be placed on equity, diversity and inclusion, reconciliation, a robust GBA plus approach, uh, city plan alignment, and recognition of the new realities we're facing around social issues and climate change. So based on the discussion that we had at committee, uh, I do not feel that that approach was fully embraced with the Glanora DC. Uh, in many ways, just, you know, going back to to one of Consulor Rutherford's questions, zoning is rooted in exclusion, and I think we have a responsibility to actively take steps to undo that. Uh, and I believe we are through our current zoning bylaw renewal process, the equity toolkit that we're applying to that body of work, I think is truly innovative, and I I look forward to seeing the results of that. Um, and and I would expect a similar approach to be taken with the Heritage Resource Management Strategy. So while while this motion addresses some of the concerns around density, pardon me, density and city plan alignment, uh, I still feel that 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 embedded equity approach is missing. Um, so yeah, I I do think that it would be prudent at this time to complete that larger strategy prior to moving ahead with the DC, um, which at this point might not actually meet the standards related to equity and inclusion that we're about to set for ourselves through the Heritage Resource Management Strategy. Um, so for that reason, I I can't support the the first part of this motion, um, but would be comfortable with the second. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Constable Salvador. Constable Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I also uh really appreciate the the intent of the mover and um you know, the idea that we can uh absolutely move forward with densification and with city plan while retaining some of the historic areas of our our city. Um, I think this is a unique case where um this approach works just just inevitably will work against uh city plan goals and also, more importantly, equity. Um, DC ones for heritage areas, character areas can be really effective when there's a consistent architectural theme. But unfortunately, the only consistent theme that the that the DC was able to um pick up on in in Glanora was the size of the lots. Um, and that we know is is rooted in in equity and and economic exclusion. I know there's concern in the community about the loss of of um heritage assets, but we already have existing tools for that through the DC one designation process. So there, that tool exists, that's an incredibly effective tool. It's more effective than the heritage DC one, which will not prevent demolitions. Um, so for these these reasons, uh equity, making sure we're using the right tools in the right uh situation and and the broader planning work that uh Consulor Salvador mentioned, uh I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Stevenson. Constable Rutherford?
Yes, thank you. I will keep it brief. I think my line of questioning makes it clear my concerns over this particular motion. I understand, again, the intent by the mover. And I think there's a major tension between historical preservation and um moving forward as a city. And I think that often, when we say that they're they can be compatible, there is the tensions that we see in these kind of situations. However, uh, you know, even when I hear about the Heritage inventory, I I wonder what lens has been put on that from an indigenous lens, given where Glanora is situated. Uh, I wonder what kind of lens has been put on for um various demographic groups. And so I I do think that this is a rough tool, and I think the tool, the timing of this tool is not in alignment with where we are going. I, again, think that there is a big flag that only three properties have signed up to to create that protection. And so I I think that is the best tool, and I wish there was ways that we could get more Glanora residents to uh, you know, sign up for and be registered uh and designated to protect those sites. It is, it is the, by far, the best way. Um, I've I've alluded to the fact that I think, you know, when I think about my ward, there's three neighborhoods specifically that are identified as historically significant, Inglewood, Calder, and Greasbaugh. None of those have DC ones. None of those, uh, two of those neighborhoods are historically lower income. And I can't help but wonder if there is a social economic dimension to these DC ones. And I think that the strategy that we want to put forward, while it might take a bit more time, will consider those kind of factors so that we have that equitable preservation across neighborhoods and across socioeconomic and cultural uh factors. So again, I really do appreciate the motion on the floor. I I understand the intent of the mover. However, I think timing-wise, I cannot support a DC one at this time. Um, oh, and I would like to also add the the fact that 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 funding is coming from the council contingency is also an equitable factor that I think we need to consider as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Rutherford. Constable Nak to close?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, you know, I've I've been thinking about this a lot because uh obviously, there's been a lot of work on this and a lot of waiting until we got to the motion and um, you know, if I'm being perfectly honest, during my first term, for sure, and and I would say for a lot of my second term, uh heritage preservation uh really wouldn't fit on my list, you know, my top one hundred list of issues that I was very concerned about. Um, yeah, I, you know, I I always had appreciated the passion that uh former councillors Henderson and McKean had on this topic. They were very big champions of this work. They they advocated about heritage preservation citywide. And and through their sort of constant advocacy, it helped to shift my thinking a bit about why we need to um maybe pay a little more attention to this. And uh I also began to sort of realize that we needed to take a little more action than we had been because, uh unfortunately, we really haven't made, I would suggest, any type of substantive progress on heritage preservation over the last few decades, going back and looking at the documents that have been created over the last two decades. And I want to be clear, that's not a criticism of our administration or of past councils for that matter, it's just a recognition that unfortunately uh the tools we've been actively using really haven't been working um in in accomplishing, I think, our our overall goals. Uh, now, I also appreciate that we often talk about doing policy work uh and finishing that uh before we work on specific changes. Uh, and and I can say, you know, I was a pretty strong advocate of that approach, particularly even with something as simple as uh RF one rezonings to RF three on corner lots. Uh, I voted again, I was often the lone vote against those on council last term before the city plan was approved. Uh, and I felt strongly about it because I wanted to see that broader body of work finished um to help make sure we're bringing the community along with that work. So so I I say this as someone who very often uh supports that approach. And yet here, I am uh suggesting maybe taking a different approach. And I think the reason is, and I and I can't stress this enough, I I and I really appreciate Ms. McCabe's point, and I and I and I don't want to suggest that there's going to be nothing fruitful from the heritage management resource strategy. I think it's going to be a really good body of work for us to do. I just don't see that after so many decades of doing this, looking at best practices of so many other cities, that we're going to come up with much of a different result. We generally know the tools that we have to help address heritage preservation. One of them's not really being used, and the one that we think is the best isn't being used because for a variety of reasons. And it's not just in Glanora, it's happening across the city. Uh, even though we're one of the most robust funding uh cities uh on this type of work. So that means we either have to be willing to substantially increase that investment or look to use some of the other tools that really haven't been activated over the years. So I think it's worth doing this work. And and I think it is, and this was brought up in the question, so I really appreciate it was brought up, that unpausing this work doesn't mean that you approve a DC one, to be very clear. Unpausing this work allows that work with this new criteria to be done. And then it has to come forward to a public hearing. And I will be the first to say, because I think the points that have been raised by many of my colleagues today are very valid, that if the DC one comes forward and doesn't address the key objective of equity as well as density, then we shouldn't approve it. And then you might argue, well, isn't that a waste of work? I mean, well, you could argue the four hundred thousand dollars we've already spent on this work is a waste of work. Um, I I and I don't think so. I think there are times where we have to be willing to do things concurrently. Um, because this broader strategy, if we approve it this December, that is likely at ye- at least a year or two of work, which could potentially mean that we don't actually have anything tangible to deal with all of the communities across the city in front of this council. It might not be until next term that that actually comes before us. And I think we owe it to all the community, we're not just Glanora, which is why point two is here, to start doing some of these things concurrently where we have a general idea of where we're headed. So that's why I put this forward. Really appreciate the discussion and uh would hope, uh encourage you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Nak. I'll call the vote.
Oh, just a quick clarification. Are we voting on one and two?
Oh, sorry, I am so.
Sorry, we're gonna recall the vote.
Okay, sorry, recall the vote, and we need to split into two? Yeah, voting on part one and part two separately, voting on part one first.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes on part one, please. That has been defeated. That's defeated nine to four. Now we have part two. Call the vote.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried. All right. So six point six is done. Our next item is six point seven, affordable housing exemptions. This was a requisition, that was acquisition from executive committee to council. And uh was postponed from February twenty-second, twenty-fourth city council council meeting as well. I understand that Consulor Stevenson, you have a motion, right, that you want to table related to this, or is you want to make related to this, right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So why don't we just have that motion made first, then we know what it is. Oh, you're doing that. Good, hurry. Here you go, Constable Stevenson, go ahead.
Great, thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. So I I'd like to move it, um, that administration prepare a tax exemption bylaw under section three, six, four of the Municipal Government Act for Affordable Housing, returning to executive committee with details on exemption criteria, timeframes for evaluation, and consistent application process and evaluation that aligns with Edmonton's affordable housing strategy. And two, that administration develop an advocacy strategy for provincial legislative changes relating to legislative tax exemptions for affordable housing to focus administration, administration and mayor and councils advocacy efforts.
Thank you, Constable Stevenson. I'll second that.
Thank you, and happy to speak to this.
Can I just ask a quick clarifying question? Part two isn't going to come back with a report. Was that your intention? That's just for administration to go do something, but it will not come back to committee the way it's presented. Is that your intention?
I take administration's advice about, uh, it's fine if it's a memo, it's fine if it's whatever whatever the easiest mechanism is.
It's usually letter or other engagement, so it doesn't come back to council, right, so?
And we could certainly update council in a future inter-gov meeting as to the nature of the advocacy approach.
Good. Is that good, Madam Kirk? Good, all right. Uh, I just want to co- advise council members who are not joining in uh in the chamber, if you could keep your cameras on, please. So we want to keep an eye on the court. Thank you. Constable Stevenson, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just very briefly to to introduce this, I I'm I'm I am trying to avoid us going into into private. I know that there are a number of matters at hand, uh, but I know that time is short today. So so perhaps what I'll speak to is that uh I we all know it's it's irrefutable. We've seen mountains of evidence that the provision of affordable housing decreases the stress on tax-supported services. So that's fire, that's EPS, and a range of other community services um that uh that we provide in Edmonton. I think that providing these tax exemptions um for affordable housing providers is is a, an investment in the returns that we receive uh in terms of the decreased services that we provide. And the great opportunity it provides for these organizations to leverage uh the work, sorry, leverage their equity to build even more affordable housing. I'd just like to clarify, so section three sixty-four, this um section does not exempt these properties from the provincial education tax. Um, and that is what part two is meant to address so that they can be qualified under, and I apologize, is it three sixty-five? Which is a full exemption of all property taxes. Happy to take any questions. Look forward to the discussion, thank you.
Thank you, Constable Stevenson, for introducing the item. Council members' questions on this, Constable Gens.
Thank you, I was wondering if the mover could clarify about the social return on investment. Do we, I've seen a lot of figures ranging from ten, ten dollar return for every one dollar invested to some as high as thirty or forty. I was wondering if the mover could clarify, because I think that's an interesting argument that a million dollars spent here actually returns X million dollars to the taxpayer elsewhere.
Yes, absolutely, and a lot of the studies that I've seen have really focused on the provincial costs. So that's savings to health and the judicial system, and I know Consulor Nak can quote those more easily than I can. However, what I think is really important to be mindful of is that the municipality, like we ourselves incur significant expense by having people not in housing. So again, I spoke of fire, I know Edmonton Fire Rescue Services responds to numerous calls, countless calls related to folks who are staying in encampments. Other folks in, that are sheltering in properties that are abandoned. That has huge cost to the taxpayers and reduces the Edmonton Fire Rescue Services' ability to provide other core services. We know with EPS as well, that has a significant cost in terms of having to having to manage the housing and mental health crisis that we see playing out on our streets, rather than having folks in the housing that they need. Reducing property taxes is also critical in providing those additional supports on site, so not only keeping rents affordable, but again, investing in those programs to ensure that people do have all the supports that they need to be successful.
And the rationale for supporting a tax exemption as opposed to just straight grant transfers? I mean, I'm worried about, well, this may be not germane, but some folks in the sector don't necessarily comply with our shelter standards. And that sentiment that, you know, we wanna make sure that whenever Edmonton as a city is spending a dollar, it's in the maximal inclusive benefit for all of us.
Great question, and that's what I would really look for in terms of the language around consistent, sorry, the alignment with Edmonton's affordable housing strategy, that's certainly where I'd wanna put down criteria that include the minimum shelter standards. You know, other, other critical components that we would, we would want to align with that. In terms of the importance of it being a tax exemption rather than a grant, it comes down to the certainty. So again, being involved in a project that worked out an operating model, and again, these are twenty-year operating models. You have to bake in those assumptions around tax exemptions at the beginning to be able to understand the level of support that you can provide to residents. The challenge with grants, not only is it an ongoing application process, there's significant administrative work both on, for the nonprofits and for the city. It's a lot less certain, it's easier for those capital or, sorry, operating programs to be, to be cut as part of budget. So for me, this is really systemizing the support that we wanna provide to affordable housing.
But just to be clear though, too, like, the government of Alberta in their budget is now increasing education property taxes on Edmontonians and Albertans. This would not exempt them from that.
That is correct. And that's where the advocacy piece will hopefully rectify that.
Yeah, I'm prepared to support, I, one final question. Is it worth adding the number three in terms of an offset such as like, and this, and these tax exemptions will be paid for with an increased tax on vacant properties or mansions or properties valued at over three million dollars or something like that, like Vancouver does?
I, I think, oh, and maybe, maybe Ms. Padbury wants to jump in there. For me, for me, given, I think what's another thing to, important to remember with this is that the overall impact is very small, it's negligible, I would even say, in our overall budget, it's about a five million dollar value. So I don't know that we need to be as sophisticated as sort of where that will be offset. But Ms. Padbury can maybe speak to the feasibility of exploring that in the future.
Yeah, let me just start off by saying, and then I'll defer to legal to correct anything or add anything else. But a property tax exemption means you would exempt the property, it's not, it's not a process of offsetting from other places throughout the tax base.
Yeah, good, that's a good answer, thank you so much for that clarification.
Thank you, no further question.
Constable Hamilton.
Thank you, and I'm gonna pick up from where Consulor Gens, Consulor Gens left off. In part, because there's, there's some, I think the intention of this is really good, but there's some flags in this for me. And so these questions are for taxation. So when you have an exemption, it's not like that money goes away. It's that you have to spread the remainder of the budget over the base, correct, Ms. Padbury?
That is correct.
And would that be spread out across the entirety of the base? Or would that be spread out within the class or even subclass, i.e. residential or multifamily residential?
I'll ask Mr. Zabo to take that.
Yes, Consulor, so as you say, when you do a tax exemption, we were looking at that particular class. So the reduction, say, of the five million dollars, or the exemption of five million dollars for these property owners would then subsequently be redistributed to the remaining residential property owners only. Non-residential would not be affected. If you did this as a grant approach instead, then you would be doing it through the entire tax base. So non-residential would be contributing towards that cost. So what we're talking about there is, is an exemption to larger redistribution, in a sense, a tax increase, although a hidden tax increase to residential property owners. If you're doing it across the entire base, it's a smaller increase, but it will affect all property owners as a grant.
And, and so to the point I think that Consulor Stevenson was trying to make, that five million dollars isn't a lot across a three point five million dollar budget, but when you're talking, or three point five billion dollar budget, I should say. Or two point, I'm not, I'm gonna trip myself up on numbers here. But five million dollars across a, the residential tax base in, in year over year, is what percent annual tax increase? To that base, like spitball.
Yeah, so talking, you know, general terms, one percent increase across the entire base, about seventeen million dollars. Within residential, one percent's about nine million dollars. So a five million dollars, a little over, five, a point five percent increase to residential, if it was only limited to residential. Point five million dollars if it was across the entire base is more like a point two, seven, something like that, across the entire base.
So it's a little bit more manageable if managed as a grant, albeit I hear some of the concerns about, about functionality, but that could, in fact, sort of make it a more make it a bit more equitable as well.
Well, I would just qualify that regardless of an exemption approach or grant approach, we would be looking to do an application process either way for applicants. So there would be that expectation on their side that they have to apply for the exemption, because we can't otherwise know which property owners are actually seeking this exemption, we don't have an inventory of exactly the properties, so they'd have to apply, they'd have to meet the criteria that we set out, you know, either in a grant process or in an exemption process. And you know, to that question about, or that comment about grants being more difficult or less certain, in our perspective, it's the same perspective, kind of same thing, where exemption would be built by council by bylaw. There'd have to be a lot of clear rules around that. A tax, a grant could be built into a policy, so like we have the Brownfield Grant Policy. That's an ongoing grant, we don't have to reapply every single year, we build that into the process. So it can still be related to taxes, but it's in some ways a lot more flexible and doesn't come into all those challenges associated with exemptions and tax rules.
And one of the things I wanna cover off, and this might be a little bit out of your wheelhouse, so forgive me. I, so one of my concerns as well, I heard a claim that this could lower rents across the board and thus make housing more affordable. One of my concerns is, I wanna say a year and a half ago, two years ago, we did hear that multifamily residential sort of manifested as your large volume rental property did see a larger tax increase. And there was some tension there about how those get paid, how that gets paid for. And I know we're not in the business of making the business case for those properties. But generally speaking, if the, if the operating costs go up, the owner or owners of those types of accommodation would have to just sort of make a choice between raising rents, deferring maintenance, or or doing neither and being non-compliant with building and safety codes. And is that a consideration, or is that something that, you know, could be modeled out in terms of one of the risks of I would say offloading the tax, the taxes from some multifamily residential onto others?
So I can take, I can take a crack, I might defer to some of my colleagues as well. This kind of interrelates with some of the subclassing conversations we're having around other residential and the density conversations. From that perspective, you know, what we would always caution is the power of taxes and whether or not it's gonna move the needle in terms of rents. What we acknowledge is that the rents are set by the market, and that's gonna be the primary driver of what rents are gonna happen to be. Now, in the long term, you know, over a thirty, forty year period, will a, you know, reduction in overall taxes paid result in some shifting? That's, you know, that makes sense from an economic perspective, but are you gonna see change in the short term? We would, we would have our concerns about that. It's hard to make those kinds of judgments, and also it'd be very difficult for us to even measure if that was being successful. I'm not sure if there's anyone else who'd like to speak to that.
I appreciate it's a complex conversation, but I think you, you got at something that is a principal concern, which is that we might there is the potential to see sort of a lower construction of new mental residential over the course of a thirty to forty year period if, if those who exist are bearing the burden. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Constable Hamilton, Constable Tang.
Yeah, thank you very much for the mover for these couple motions. Wondering if you will be open to voting on them separately?
Sure, I don't even think I have to give permission, I think we just split.
Okay, okay, great, and it's been, I know this report has been due for quite a while and I read the reports and there's a lot of detailed explanation between grants versus exemptions. And I actually share some of the similar flags as Consulor Hamilton here, I think, yeah, effort to, but anyways, I'll, I'll say that. So to Mr. Zabo, can you just, I'll just apologize if you have to remind me of some of this, but right now for seniors housing, it's grants.
So this whole sphere of affordable housing is definitely a challenging area. There's a lot of different kinds of property within this inventory. Some of it is by default exempt from all taxes. So seniors housing, seniors lodge accommodations, under the Municipal Government Act, is fully exempt from property tax as it is currently. So that's not, is part of this conversation. Really what we're talking about here is a subset of the entire affordable housing inventory that equates to about five million dollars of taxes are currently being paid. Those providers have been paying those taxes, you know, since their inception. And it's a conversation about no longer having them paid municipal portion.
Can you remind me, what was the rationale to focus on senior housing and not the rest?
So sorry, why the Municipal Government Act has senior housing in there and not other?
Yeah, if there was a rationale provided?
I'd only say to that point that Municipal Government Act, you know, was put in place in the late nineties. And I think at that time, the conversation around affordable housing had not evolved to that same extent. Seniors housing was something, I think, within their mind. Again, that was, you mentioned the report, affordable housing isn't even referenced within the Municipal Government Act as a category. This is often why the challenge we face with exempting it is that they're trying to put the exemption rather than into a specific section that says affordable housing is exempted, although we have to define what that means. We're trying to exempt it as a nonprofit, and that comes with its own challenges.
Yeah, and have you ever looked into kind of the differences or benefits of whether exemption or, you know, grants like this for permanent supportive projects or versus, say, larger, you know, organizations like home ed? Did you ever kind of look at that, that analysis?
So, Consulor, if I can just jump in here, are you asking if we looked at the analysis of what's more beneficial, grant or exemption?
Or I guess the impact to the organization, kind of the, you know, the smaller ones that, that focus on really permanent supportive housing versus organizations that perhaps focus on below market. If it hasn't been done, that's okay too, I'm just curious.
Well, maybe I'll refer to Ms. Watch or Mr. Zabo.
I believe actually Crystal Cogener is also on the line, so I might defer to the Affordable Housing team.
Sure. Thanks for the question, Consulor Tang. I would say, I think that all the affordable housing providers that spoke at the last, at the committee meeting had different rationale for why the, you know, different but similar rationale for why the impacts of exemption would be really impactful for them. Obviously, when it comes to supportive housing, those bear a higher operating cost in general because of the addition, you know, the requirement for onsite supports and the need for much further subsidy. So for sure, the, you know, the tax impact would be the most beneficial for the deepest subsidy units, there's no question about that. But at the same time, I think, you know, as long as all of the providers that spoke basically said, as long as the exemptions are going for nonprofit affordable housing providers, it will be reinvested, that fund, that money will be reinvested in the creation of more affordable housing units.
Right, I would just like to interject right now, Kate Watt, Branch Manager of Assessment and Taxation, to make the point that exemptions and grants, from our perspective, from administering assessment and grants, can be somewhat equivalent with some definite benefits to the grant piece, in that there's a lot more control and known factors. We can actually take the exemption amount, the tax amount, and put it on the tax bill as a credit so that the, the resulting bill is sort of negated. So in the actual mechanics of it, a grant can often look like a tax exemption from the tax payer's perspective. It's just from the administrative piece, we have a lot more control and we're not subject to Assessment Review Board decision-making.
Okay, great, I'm out of time, thank you.
Thank you, Constable Tang, Constable Salvador?
Uh, thank you. So I just wanted to get some further clarification just around, I guess, the, the application process that would be required for exemptions, because I, I definitely hear, hear Consulor Stevenson saying, absolutely not, and I agree, we need to lower those barriers to support affordable housing, but throughout this conversation, I'm hearing that they, they look very similar. So I guess I'm looking to administration to clarify that, and then I'd also ask to the mover, are there, are there other benefits to, to going down the, the tax exemption route as opposed to granting if, if those barriers are basically equivalent or the same? So I'll go to administration first and then Consulor Stevenson.
So if I can start, I would just say that when you, when you provide an exemption, it's determined on the basis of meeting that criteria. If you are expecting us to continually evaluate whether that criteria is met, like are you year after year providing shelter in the standards? That that becomes very, very difficult for us to administer. But Ms. What, did you wanna add anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Padbury, yes, the administrative nature of this could get quite complex. We would be looking for a definition that is very clear. I would suggest that part of the reason the provincial government hasn't put it into their legislation yet is the real challenges that come with defining what is and is not affordable housing, and then being able to structure that in a way that a successor or a tax exemption specialist can make a determination. On the legal side, I would defer to Cam Ashmore from our Legal Services branch, who understands this very well. Cam, are you there?
Yes, thanks, Kate. So you can make a grant and exemption application process almost identical. The, the problem on the exemption side is that you need to tie in the legal definitions so clearly that it becomes a more complicated process on the enforcement side. Whereas on the grant side, you can have a little bit more wiggle room. And part of the reason for that is the exemption side has to be done through the bylaw. So your definitions have to appear in the bylaw. Can you get your definitions perfect? Well, that's a problem at times. And that's really the challenge with doing this. So without really clear definitions, the bylaw side ends up being a more complex process, even though the application process itself can be almost identical.
Okay, thank you for that, and maybe over to the mover around some further, further commentary. I guess, just, just trying to understand why the granting is insufficient if, if we're being told that that process is very, very similar.
Yeah, I mean, I think I can only speak to, to experience. So having worked in an organization that has enjoyed tax exemptions on some of the properties for many years, those were granted and there was no sort of ongoing administrative work that was particularly onerous or, or frankly, that I was even aware of at, at both a board or staff level um compared to a grant application process that requires hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages of documentation and is exceptionally onerous, uh, especially for smaller, smaller organizations. So um again, I, I'm hearing administration give the advice that those can be streamlined. My worry with that being that the tax exemption process looks more like the grant process, which has um such a high level of what I believe is intended to be risk mitigation, but it ends up being a, a considerable barrier. I think it's also important to remember that many of these properties will have um other agreements with the city of Edmonton through the Affordable Housing Investment Program um that has ongoing reporting and monitoring as well. So those can be harmonized um as well. So, so again, um, I, I continue to see the value of that tax exemption um for, for those reasons.
Okay, and just to administration, is there in, would we have the opportunity to, I guess, make that exemption process as, as easy as possible? Or are those measures and kind of checks built in regardless?
I think that the piece, sorry, I think that the piece to understand here is that in the field of property tax exemptions, there's an awful lot of legislation, some of which is easier to navigate as a property taxpayer than others. So in Consular Salvador's example, it could be that these are properties that are made exempt through sections of the municipal government act or through sections of the regulation we call COPTA. Those are often, you know, year to year, these are things that we administer because they're based on property. What we're talking about here is exemptions based on property use. There's no way to administer these without some kind of application process, no matter if they're a provincial exception, a municipal exception, or a municipal grant.
Good. Thank you for that. Consular Rice?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I have two questions in terms of possible impact for this, from this motion on the floor, and then these two questions to administration. So the first one is about, I do believe the intent of giving any time of tax exemption to affordable housing is to directly benefit those in need of no income housing. So with rental pr- uh prices increasing right now, so what guarantee does this city have that earning saving in property taxes will be passed on to Edmontonians who actually need this type of housing?
Yeah, thank you for the question.
Yeah, to administration. Thank, thank you.
To administration, go ahead.
Yeah.
So you're asking about, because the tax exemption isn't a savings, so I'm, I'm just a little bit unclear on that question.
The question is, how do you pass on the benefit of a tax exemption to actual users of the affordable housing? If there's a tax, yeah, go ahead.
Consular Rice, I think the honest answer to that question is, as we as administration cannot promise that or guarantee that in any way. Uh, the exemption would go to the property owner. What that property owner then does with that is, is up to them. You've heard from a number of those property owners during the course of this conversation, who said that they would support their operations. Uh, but we as administration have no control once the exemption has been made.
If I could, I would just add quickly to Mr. Saba- Sable's answer that um there is no way to control that, but one of the criteria that we would look at potentially having for this exemption would be that the grant, that it only goes to nonprofits which are incorporated for the purposes of affordable housing. So it would be consistent with their, the money would be used consistent in a way with their governance structure and corporate objects.
Uh, so that is going to my next question. Uh, so for this type of properties owners, uh, so the tax assumption increase is increase the property's value and due to the lower cost of the ownership.
Again, whenever we're talking about property taxes, it's, it's, we want to be careful about what extent it's actually affecting property values or that overall macroeconomic trending. Uh, so if you're reducing the property taxes paid by a property, is it going to significantly impact their resale value? Uh, it's hard for us to, to make those kinds of judgments. Again, these are typically, you know, longer term affordable housing properties. And so their intention is not to sell them, but to continue to use them for that purpose.
Uh, so this is what I heard uh for the concerns. And how can the city ensure th- this type of property owners uh won't absorb all the intensives from all orders of government and such as grants and then use the increased value as a reason to sell to another investors with different objectives that as affordable income housing? And because, and everything we're doing here to support, to support our Edmontonians and who actually need this type of things, but how we can pass the benefits and from this tax examp- exemption and to actually uh to the Edmontonians who need this and then can city ensure this?
So I, I think I heard there, Consular Rice, the concern being that an exemption would be granted and that property would then be sold for nonaffordable housing purposes. The whole purpose behind an application process and review is to ensure that it's still being used appropriately. A title change is often one that triggers us to do a review. Uh, any kind of exemption has to be viewed at that point. And if it was no longer being used for the original purpose, either from the granting perspective or from an exemption perspective, that would be, the grant or the exemption would be removed.
So do we have this type of like procedure or policy in place and to ensure and the benefits will pass on and to our Edmontonians who needs this?
Cam, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, Consular, I was just going to add one other thing. Um, one of the problems with an exemption is there's no real way to claw back an exemption once it's granted. So often with grant programs, what you'll end up doing is you'll uh place a caveat on the property with the grant requirements such that if they sell to a third party and that third party is no longer going to use it as affordable housing, you can actually pull the grant back. It's a way to enforce the terms of the grant itself, depending on the nature of the, the grant. It's actually one of the other pretty significant differences between an exemption and a grant per se.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Consular Rice. Consular Wright?
Thank you very much. Um, and my apologies, I'm not winking at anybody. Um, I had cataract surgery, so I'm just trying to get focus here.
You can turn your camera off if that helps, Consular Wright. You can turn your camera off if it helps.
That, that's okay. I'll, I'll just at least ask the questions. Um, so I'm just wondering, um, once the exemption um criteria has been defined, wouldn't that make it less onerous on administration rather than doing the annual grant program application every year?
Consular, perhaps, sorry, Anton, perhaps I'll steal that one as well. Um, when do you have the definitions within the bylaw? It's going to depend entirely on what those definitions are. So a lot of our conversation today is around affordable housing. And in my mind, as a lawyer, my initial thought is, well, what do you mean by affordable housing? Are you talking about non-market housing? Are you talking about supportive housing? And what are your definitions for those? If you box it in well enough in terms of a definition, it does become simpler, but it also becomes a lot more onerous in terms of who qualifies for the exemption under the, the bylaw then. Um, so when you have a bylaw in place, your definition set the bylaw. If you set your definition simple so that very few properties qualify and it's really obvious, it'll be a simple process. But I don't think that's really what we're talking about in, in this context, and that's part of the problem.
I think, Consular Wright, it's just worth also pointing out that regardless of approach, we would seek an, an application, right? So on an exemption, you would require an application, so we knew which property owners were there. And a grant would require an application. Now, from a grant perspective, that doesn't require us to seek renewal every single year. It could be you apply once and you're on the grant program on a go forward, sim- similar to an exemption approach. We would want to be checking in every now and then to ensure the use is still remaining the same. Uh, so the amount of application, the amount of applications required and the amount of check-ins would be similar, I think, under both approaches.
Okay, so the, the grants are not necessarily an annual application. Okay.
Yeah, I think, and that's maybe worth just clarifying, because I think, you know, what we heard from some of the speakers was a concern that grants are fleeting and that it's harder to depend on grants from that perspective. I think they're basing that off of uh some experience with the provincial government where grants are, are doled out uh based on a budget cycle and then the next year it's different. What we're suggesting here is developing a policy, uh, you know, that would outline, under these circumstances, council approves the use of a grant. You put aside ongoing uh tax revenue to support that grant and it would go forward on an ongoing basis. There'd be no need to revisit it every single year unless there wasn't any discuss it with council, but that would be the same as an exemption.
So if you can define what's required for an ongoing grant, how can you can't define what's required for an exemption?
Cam, do you want to speak a little bit more to that?
Yeah, I don't think it's a question of whether you can define it, Consular. It's, it's simply a different legal process. So when you're in a bylaw process where things can be appealed to a different tribunal, um, you can come up with a complex definition, you can come up with a simple definition, but it's got to be something that can be clearly, clearly interpreted. So if we had a bylaw that, for example, said affordable housing providers are exempt, that could mean anything. That could be non-market, that could mean um various types of supportive housing, various types of social housing. And it becomes very broad because there's really not a clear definition. If you do that in a grant approach, you can have background policy documentation and, and such that it would become much clearer what you really mean, and there's really very little way to appeal that sort of a thing. And you can also make ongoing changes, which is problematic in running this through a bylaw process.
Kate, I believe you want to speak to it as well.
Consular, I, I would also add very much to what Cam Ashmore is saying, that from an administration perspective, from the assessment and taxation perspective, when we as, you know, as council, as, as the city are giving money out, we have a lot more control about who and when and where that goes, whereas on an exemption side, we can have a definition, but that definition has to be interpreted by entities that are completely outside council's jurisdiction. So properties that may be considered um less, less than ideal housing um may qualify under the way we write this definition. Uh, so we would be essentially supporting, if you'll excuse the term slum lords in some ways through, like, there's just a lot more opportunity for things to go awry on the exemption side because of the legal piece that comes with managing tax exemptions.
Okay, well, my, my time's up.
Thank you, Consular Wright.
Devotionally on site. Thank you.
Consular Principay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So uh I've heard the number five million dollars, it's just five million dollars. But if this motion were to go through, could it possibly be more than five million dollars, the way it's worded?
Appreciate that question, Consular Principay. So what we've done as part of this conversation is try our best to gather up uh what we know in the existing inventory. We were finding additional properties right up until the eleventh hour of writing this report and even afterwards. So it's hard, because again, we don't necessarily know which ones are totally out there. We've done our best to estimate that cost. It could be more. Technically, it could also be less based on who applies, right? If not all property owners apply, it could be less, but we'd expect it to, to build up over time. Uh, with that, the advantage again of the grant being that you can be very clear about the amount of money you're allocating with the exemption, it's going to be whoever successfully uh falls into that exemption category and is, is determined by the assessment review board, uh, then they will get that exemption, so it'll, it'll adjust that way.
Okay, yeah, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular Principay. Consular Rutherford, can you take the chair off a couple of questions? The, first of all, why would non-residential not share the burden? What is the reason for that? Uh, why would only be shared by other residential, so, uh, pro- residence property owners?
So just pointing out the distinction between an exemption approach and a grant approach again. So under an exemption, we're looking at adjusting the distribution of the tax levy within the residential property class.
But why can't that be, why can't that exemption be spread out to non-res?
Fair, Consular, so, uh, uh, Mary Sophie, what I'd say is that you, you, without, without direction from council, we would uh administer it that way because it is the default. It's in that bucket of residential tax levy and we're distributing that way. If council were to say, you know, exempt and redistribute a certain amount of that cost to the non-residential side as well, it could be done, but it would require an, an additional motion from council to redistribute the budget allocation between residential and non-residential.
That can be done, but requires a direction. Okay. Uh, what would require to be ready to provide grant uh instead of, are you ready to provide grant uh funding? Uh, or does that require direction from council instead of exemption program?
We would still need direction in order to pursue that approach, uh, and we would suggest one or the other. Either way, we'll need some more time to go over what the definitions would be and how we build up an application process who would be in charge of it. If there's an additional cost associated with the administration of that program, so that would be a report we'd have to bring forward, uh, one way or the other, if that was council's will.
And the grant application can be really simplified, right? It's not, it doesn't have to be as Consular Stevenson, her experience, I'm pretty sure is, like, that's experience we heard from many, many other people. It's very difficult to uh apply for grants and there's a, you have to have, have a specialized experienced person to, to do so. Kind of a process, very simplified.
What I'd say there again is that we would need the same information uh to determine whether or not a qual- a property qualifies for grant as we would to know if the property qualifies for an exemption. Either one would have an application process. I'd expect the information we request under both those approaches would be the same uh either way. And obviously, we would seek to, to keep that as streamlined as possible, but we also have to understand what that property is doing in order to qualify for the program.
Okay, got it. I'm getting a sense that this requires more in-depth analysis on both ends. The exemption side as well as the grant side. Uh, and we don't have the time today to do so, so we are getting to twelve o'clock and we have a number of speakers on the list. So we, this would have to carry on to twenty second, right, uh, Madam clerk?
Yeah, so actually, it'd be really helpful now that you're at the end of your meeting. We do require direction on what you'd like to do. So there's a, a draft motion that's been provided that orders of the day need to be continued.
Yeah, so can we, um, someone move, can you give us that notice, uh, that, that motion so somebody can move the extent that we'd carry on on twenty second first?
Yep, we've done that.
Okay, Consular Rutherford, over to you.
So I would like to move that the orders of the day for the March fourteenth, sixteenth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting be changed as fol- follows, continuation on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two at nine thirty AM, lunch uh noon to one thirty PM, recess three thirty to three forty-five PM, and then adjournment at five PM.
Okay, second, second by Consular Cartmel. Any questions on carry on this conversation on twenty second? Consular Janz? Consular Janz?
Sorry, I was there to debate. Uh, no, 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 uh, it was from the previous item.
Got it, okay. Uh, please call the vote.
Yeah, could, we did, Consular Cartmel.
Call the vote?
We're just sending the vote out, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. Think that is carried, and we also have another housekeeping procedural thing to look after, so I'll go to Consular Rutherford for that again.
Thank you.
Thank you. I move the, that the following items be added to the March fourteenth, sixteenth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting agenda, additions of seven point eleven, bylaw two zero zero seven one, the temporary transit in city facilities face mask bylaw, and seven point one two, bylaw two zero zero seven two, temporary face mask bylaw.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, the items were on the agenda, the bylaws weren't there, so this doesn't require a special resolution.
Does require?
Sorry, it does not.
Oh, does not?
It was already on the agenda. We just didn't have the reports quite yet.
We're just adding the reports to the agenda. Okay, good. All right, and that's second by Consular Cartmel? Okay. Oh, I didn't see.
Uh, point of order.
Just, just hold on, Consular Rice. It's um, there's a lot of noise coming back. Okay, go ahead. So we have a motion on the floor moved by Consular Rutherford and second by Consular Cartmel. Go ahead, Consular Rice.
Uh, can the motion just, the spring on the?
Yes.
I thought, I thought I missed the first, I missed the first.
There you go.
Okay, so. But these two, these two parolages are already on, on the agenda, right?
Yeah, so this is the, uh, the report being attached to those two items.
Additions, okay.
Yeah.
I was confused and I said already on the agenda.
Good. Okay, anyone else? No questions? Please vote.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried and we will resume our meeting on twenty second. Until then, we are adjourned.